I'd like to call him in order, please rise. Repleseal Visions.
What Repleseal Visions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, the invocation will be given not by Pastor Jamal Brown, who called at six and said he was not feeling well, so guess what? Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, may our thoughts tonight and the words that we speak be accessible and equitable in your sight. Amen. Item number four, adjustment approval of the January 15, 2019 meeting agenda. Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the January 15, 2019, meeting agenda with the following changes, which are none.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, public comment period. We have no one signed up tonight, so we'll open and close the public comment period and start with recognitions. And give me a second. Tonight, we welcome Representative Sidney Batch from the North Carolina State Legislature. And if you will approach the bench, Counselor, actually that bench over there. I'll tell you a little bit about her. She is a Holly Springs resident. I've checked this all with her, so I'm sure I'm legal, okay? We're very grateful that she's here tonight and could join us. House, North Carolina House District 37 is a family law attorney, social worker, and a child welfare advocate. She received her undergraduate degree at the University of North Carolina Chapel Harrell, where she remained for her Juris Doctorate and Masters of Social Work. A former board member for the Women's Center of Wake County. Representative Batch is a current board member for the Julie Crump Foundation. She also volunteers for the Child's Advocate, a project of legal aid in North Carolina. A resident of a community, she and her husband have lived in Wake County for, and we've fixed that, 13 years. And if you'd like to say a few words, we would love to have you say a few words. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually am very privileged to stand in front of all of you. I know that I have already actually met with Mayor Sears and also Manager Harrington with regards to some projects that we want to move forward with regards to the General Assembly. What you find quickly after an election and when you're serving is that you go through a lot of training. So for the past five days, I've been in nonstop training, and I had about seven days prior to that, starting right after the election. And I've learned that local bills are just as important as the general bills that are passed, and it's really important, especially with the growth that we have here in Holly Springs, to make sure that we go ahead and push as many local bills as we can forward with regards to making sure that we can grow appropriately and that we have the resources that we need. Holly Springs is an amazing place to live, as we all know. It's one of the safest places, clearly, to live, and it's where I'm very happy to raise my family and to raise my two little boys. And so I really welcome any type of feedback. My LA is Montrevis King. He's not here today, but I will make sure that you guys have all my contact information. And of course, it's just my last name. It's my first name, last name, so Sidney.Batch@ncleg.gov, and you can reach me, of course, through there. We are hoping to set up hours within the district to go ahead and actually meet with people, coffee houses, something that's very easy so that people don't have to travel. I have two young boys, they're five and seven, so, you know, I try as much as possible to make sure that it's flexible for all of us who work and who stay at home as well. I will be skipping out around eight just to go ahead and make sure that I can talk them in and read them bedtime stories. I have lots of meetings that I have to get to, but I also think that it's a priority to make sure that we can all be able to be available for our families and to make it easier for people that work and then for us to make sure that we have the resources we need to take care of our kids. So I want to make sure that I am available to all of you. Sam Ceracy, the Senator, who is serving in this district, also is planning to actually come and greet you guys at a different day, but what we plan to do is actually have our very first town hall here, and we're hoping to bring in other individuals, including the board member, school board members, and then also the county commissioner that represents this district, so that we can actually talk about issues. So we want to be very present, we want to be active, we want to hear your feedback. You're the residents, and we were elected by you to go ahead and serve you. So if there's anything that you need, please reach out to us, but we look forward to going ahead and scheduling, we hope, our first town hall here in February. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As she said, Senator Ceracy had a little dental emergency, so I will catch him on the second week, or third weekend in February. Thank you again for coming. Stay as long as you like. Item 6B, recognitions. The oath of office will be given today to Linda McKinney, our brand-new, our brand-new town clerk, and those at oath will be given by Linda Harper. Please approach the bench. She worked for an attorney, too. Never mind.
Linda McKinney, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent with the law of the Constitution, and that I will completely discharge these citizens of this town clerk of the town of Holly Springs.
Let's hear it. Welcome aboard. When I say Linda, it's both of them. Oh, never mind. Agenda item 7A, public hearing, annexation A1808 Viking Real Estate LLC, LOL, TO of NCLLC, and it's not Gina Clapp. Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As mentioned, the next item we have is an annexation. The requested action is to open the public hearing and continue it to the February 19 meeting at the applicant's request, so that it will go on the same agenda as their, the subdivision plan. So they needed a little bit more time, so we just want to make sure everything moves forward together on that one.
Any questions? Or further comments? Motion.
Motion to continue public hearing to February 19, 2019, meeting.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 7B, public hearing, annexation petition A1809 Southern Crossroads, Inc., and Exchange Holly Springs Holdings LLC. Same, Melissa.
Thank you. This annexation is for the Southern Crossroads Master Plan Development Area. This is a request for, also to open the public hearing, and in this case, adopt the annexation ordinance 18, A1809. The property is approximately 61.06 acres. It is located generally south of Ralph Stevens Road. Sorry, we've got a little typo there. This is actually Main Street and, yeah, there, sorry, there. Get a little mapping there. It is contiguous to the town limits. This is a voluntary annexation request, and it does meet all state statutory requirements for annexation. And with that, I take any questions. Otherwise, we would ask for a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance.
Questions of the board? Hearing none. We'll open a public hearing and close a public hearing, because again, no one signed up. Any further discussion? All good? All good? Go ahead. Motion.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A18-09, annexing 61.06 plus or minus acres owned by Southern Crossroads Incorporated and Exchange Holly Springs Holdings LLC into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Still there? Agenda item 7C, public hearing, annexation A18-11 Aqua North Carolina, Inc.
Thank you. We have another annexation here, A18-11. Again, a request to open and close the public hearing and adopt the annexation ordinance A4818-11. This is another voluntary annexation petition. It is contiguous to the town limits for approximately 1.033 acres. This is associated with the Brayton Well, Brayton Park well site improvements and development. Give you a map for context. This is located, obviously, west of Piney Grove Wilbon, south of Ralph Stevens, in the Brayton Park development.
Any questions at this point? Seeing none, again, we'll open and close a public hearing. No one has signed up. Motion. Please.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A18-11, annexing 1.03 plus or minus acres owned by Aqua North Carolina, Inc., into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Agenda item 7D, public hearing, 18 SEU 14, 171 Tradition Trail Suite 204, Matt Baird. Hi, Matt.
Good evening. All right, so tonight, we'll be looking at this request for special exception use, conduct a quasi-judicial public hearing for the special exception use, as well as making a determination for the special exception use findings of fact, and eventually considering the special exception use. So the property in question is located at the end of Tradition Trail. The specific address is 171 Tradition Trail. We have a kind of close-up of where the actual leased space is going to be coming up, but the request is for an athletic facility in the RT Research and Technology District, located at 171 Tradition Trail Suite 204. And that suite is located here in kind of the halfway down the southernmost building. So for context here, you see the Daniel Dairs complex there. The planning board approved 801 and had no concerns at their meeting. This time, we can have public hearing.
Any questions at this point, Matt? Or later? Okay. At this point in time, we do have, we're going to open a public hearing. I'm going to call Josh Brackett. Josh, you there? Please go forward. State your name and address. You're going to do both the same? All right. Then you have, well, never mind. You have all, no, not.
I just want to say thank you for allowing us to speak tonight and potentially share our passion for martial arts, as we'll be opening a martial arts studio here in Holly Springs.
How soon?
Hopefully by May, April or May. Yeah, that's what we're looking for. Just a brief history on me. We moved here from central Illinois, June of 2017, where we, Alex and I operated a martial arts studio there called Peoria Muay Thai from 2014 to 2017, and we sold when we relocated with my wife's job Caterpillar, which it still runs successfully to this day, which we're pretty proud of. I've been training since 2004 and teaching since 2007, or I ran my own program from 2007 to when we opened our own facility in 2014. I've been competing. I've won a couple of national championships myself, and we, as a team, brought, what, eight national champions out of our gym in just three years, so we're pretty proud of that. All the way, you know, with a family environment, it's not just a fighter's gym, that's what we focus on, the everyday person. So I'll let my wife speak a little bit more in detail. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sears and the Council, Representative Batch. My name's Alex Brackett. I am married to this gentleman, and...
There was a pause there. We'll leave it at that.
I'm a marketing manager for Caterpillar. It's my full-time job. I've been with Caterpillar for 10 years. On the side, I have this passion for Muay Thai kickboxing. I'm also a United States Marine Corps officer, combat veteran, and I've deployed twice in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. I've been training, coaching, fighting in Muay Thai for the past 20 years now. I was the women's, the US Women's welterweight national champion, and then went on to represent the United States at the Worlds, got a silver medal in Austria, and that was right before I joined the Marine Corps. So then I took a little bit of a pause. Since then, I met my husband in doing Muay Thai, and we built a wonderful family community in central Illinois together and produced eight national champions, as my husband had mentioned, but we also were able to grow our business by 30% in the three, every year for the three years that we were there. And we spent very little on actual marketing. It was mostly word-of-mouth, reputation, and just, it was a great environment. I think what sets us aside from a lot of other martial arts facilities and studios, we truly are a family. We've always been a family. I am a soccer mom. We have a six-year-old son, and he is the center of our world, and we've built everything around the gym and everything that we can do. But it is a passion of ours, and even though working full-time, I feel it is important and a part of our continued duty to be able to share our love of Muay Thai and combat sports with other folks. And I think the biggest reason, too, is Muay Thai changed my life because it helped me realize that I had innate physical power as a young 22-year-old young lady, and that changed my life. Throwing a punch, learning how to throw a punch properly, completely changed my life. And I have a, we both have an immense passion for being able to teach people how proper technique, how to be able to control anger and energy and things like that. And additionally, as you all probably are aware, Muay Thai and martial arts builds self-confidence, self-awareness, you help manage your fears, but really, the passion comes from enabling people to do things that they never thought were physically capable. And we coach people of every sort of, for every walk of life and every sort of physical condition with abilities and disabilities. I am a disabled veteran. I have a passion for coaching other disabled veterans, and so I just need you to show up, and we'll be able to help you. So we're excited to move here. We chose specifically North Carolina and Holly Springs because of the tremendous growth potential, as well as the lack of really solid Muay Thai coaching in the area. So we are very excited to become a part of the Holly Springs community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Is there further discussion from the board? Seeing none?
No.
Motion, please. Anything else, Matt? Matt, did we miss anything?
No.
Okay. No further discussion? Two motions, please.
I'll make the motion, make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact for a special exception use for a specified in UDO to allow for athletic facility in the Research and Technology District at the property located at 171 Traditional Trail.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Number two.
Having made findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use 18 SEU 14 to allow for an athletic facility in the RT Research and Technology District at the property located at 171 Tradition Trail.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Okay.
Agenda item 7E.
Yes.
Ready? Public hearing, 18 SEU 16, 18 VAR TC 14 slash 18 VAR TC dash 15 SUG Farm. Matt Baird.
Okay. Thank you. So yes, the next petition is for special exception use and two variants of development standard requests. I'll let them clear up.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Yes. So once again, we will conduct quasi-judicial public hearing for the special exception use and variance requests, ask to adopt a resolution considering the findings of fact for both the special exception use and variances, make a determination on the variances, and then ultimately make a determination on the special exception use. As a town-initiated project, they did not go to planning board, so there's no report from the planning board on this. The special exception use complies with all of our minimum standards. The variance request, to go into a little bit more detail, the first is a result of our requirements within our residential districts, of which SUG Farm is zoned residential, for all non-residential structures to meet certain commercial architectural standards. To try and more efficiently proceed with improvements on the SUG Farm property, we've requested that this variance be granted to essentially waive that requirement so that we can bring forward improvements on the property that don't have to meet commercial glazing or masonry or all of the, all the different standards without having to go through five or 10 variance and waivers every time. The second variance request is a result of the deed restriction that is placed upon the property at SUG Farm for the Triangle Land Conservancy that restricts the impervious cover on the property. Essentially, this is to allow for non-hard surface parking on the property so that we can continue moving forward with bringing amenities and improvements to the property without having to pave the whole thing. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions or comments at this point?
Matt, just one on the parking. With our pavilion that we've, that we're working on building over there, do we have a requirement for the ADA spaces to be paved?
I believe that Building Code would require that at least the ADA spaces be placed on a hard surface.
Yes.
Yes.
So the variance, then, is really just for the remainder of the parking? We'll still be able to meet our ADA requirement?
Right.
And then it's just the rest of the parking that we would otherwise require?
Yes. Yeah, so we require that all off-street parking be provided with a hard surface, and so this would essentially be removing that general requirement, but does not exempt them from the North Carolina Building Code.
Thanks.
Matt?
Other questions at this point? Yes?
Matt, will this help us with some of the issues with parking at SUG now when it rains, or like, is that what you're looking at, is maybe make some of those entrances with gravel so we have less issues?
That's something that I think we're going to try and work with our consultants on throughout the process. I know with the picnic shelter permits that we've been kind of reviewing, we've been talking back and forth about what the possibilities are, we're somewhat limited in our ability to put down different types of ground cover based off of the Triangle Land Conservancy definitions of, you know, what's permeable pavement and what's not. That's starting to get a little bit further outside of my realm of expertise, though.
Okay.
Anything else right now? Nope? At this point in time, we'll open and close the public hearing. No one signed up. Any further discussion for the board? Or questions? You good? Okay. There you go. One of four.
Motion to adopt Resolution 19-01, make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use, variance of development standards, 18-VA-R-T-C-14 and 18-VA-R-T-C-15 as stated in resolution.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Number two.
Having made findings of fact, motion to approve variance petition 18-VA-R-T-C-14 to remove architectural and site design review requirements from the public park as listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion's been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Number three.
Having made findings of fact, motion to approve variance petition 18-VA-R-T-C-15 to allow to remove hard surface parking requirements and allow grass and gravel parking for the public park as listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Number four.
Having made findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use 18-SEU-16 to allow for a public park in the R30 and R20 districts with the conditions as listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Agenda item 8A, consent agenda. Mayor Portem.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have Agenda item 9A, new business, annual board of adjustment and planning board appointments. Now we can say Gina Clapp.
Yes, hi.
Go, Gina. How are you?
Good. So this evening, what we have before you is the town council appointments for the annual term expirations for both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board, and tonight, you're going to be requested to actually make the appointments for both boards. And so every year, we are before you, our Planning Board and our Board of Adjustments. Members all serve three-year terms, and our terms begin March 1st and end on the last day of February, and so this evening, you're going to be considering terms for March 1st, 2019, through February 28th, 2022. We had sent to you and included in your packets all the applications for residents that were interested in being considered for appointment to these boards, a map that shows you the location of where all of our current board members live, as well as where the applicants live, and we also provided for you the attendance records, because one of the items that you as council are charged with is also evaluating the attendance of our board members and determining if there is any adjustments based on attendance. I'm not aware of any significant issues at this point in time, but it's up to you to evaluate those and consider any adjustments you need to make to the boards. So this evening, what we do have for term expirations for the Board of Adjustment, there'll be one motion. If you want to break it out into two, you're welcome to do that as well. This year, we have all in-town only, no ETJ members, so these are a little bit easier. We have two in-town regular members and one in-town alternate member for the Board of Adjustment. Our two in-town regular members both requested reappointment. Our alternate member did not. And then for our Planning Board, we have three in-town members whose terms are expiring, and all three have requested reappointment. And so with that, I will turn it over to you to determine how you'd like to move forward.
Thank you, Melissa, for giving me the cheat sheet. It helps. This will be a little easier than the last one.
I think so.
Check four of us to go through that. All right, let's do it this way. Again, we'll start at the left. Applications for Board of Adjustment, we choose two regular and one alternate. If you'll give me those first, Dana, I appreciate it, and then we'll go right down the line with the Planning Board, and then keep going, and we should be done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For my nominations for the Board of Adjustment, I have Jay Marinco, Timothy Forrest.
I'm sorry?
Timothy Forrest.
Yep.
And the alternate member, Morgan Wiley.
Got it. Planning Board?
Sean McGrath.
Sean McGrath.
Ernie Carpico.
Ernie Carpico.
And Dana Ryback.
And Dana Ryback. Got it. Thank you. Cheryl, you're up.
Exact same. For Board of Adjustments, I had Jay Marinco, Timothy Forrest, and Morgan Wiley as the, for ETJ.
Okay.
And for Planning Board, Sean McGrath, Ernie...
Wait a minute.
Oops, sorry.
Sean McGrath, yep.
Ernie Carpico and Dana Ryback.
Okay. Pete, thank you.
For Board of Adjustments, I have Jay Marinco and Timothy Forrest.
Just a second. Got it. Jim Rico, okay.
And then Jason Weinstein as alternate.
Jason Weinstein, if I can find it. Hmm. Oh, I see it. I'm sorry. I got it.
And for Planning Board, Ernie Carpico, Sean McGrath, and Dana Ryback.
Okay. Tom?
Board of Adjustments, first of all, thank you for all those that applied. I appreciate those who had taken the time to fill out the applications. So for the Board of Adjustments, Jay Marinco.
Yep.
Timothy Forrest.
Yep.
And Jason Weinstein as the alternate.
Yep. Okay.
For the Planning Board.
Yep.
Sean McGrath.
Sean McGrath, got it.
Ernie Carpico.
Yep.
And Dana Ryback.
Yep. Hang on one second.
Yep.
I got it. Okay, thank you. Christine?
Thank you. And yes, these applications were fabulous, and the experience that is coming forward to help serve our town is really appreciated, and please, if we don't get to select you tonight, there are lots of opportunities. Please still be involved. My choices, and I, and like I do usually, I look at the map of where people are and how many folks have lived here for a long time and not so long, so I do take those things into consideration. My selections for Board of Adjustments, Board of Adjustments is Jay Marinco.
Yep.
Timothy Forrest.
Yep.
And the alternative, I have Caleb Brown. And the alternative, I have Caleb Brown.
Hang on one second on that one. Who was it again on the alternate?
Caleb Brown.
Oh, got it, okay.
And then for the Planning Board, I had Sean McGrath.
Yep.
Ernie Carpico.
Yep.
And Beverly Thompson.
And who was the last, Beverly Thompson?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Okay. What I have is, for the Board of Adjustment, first two regulars would be Jay Marinco and Timothy Forrest. And for the alternate, I have Jason Weinstein. Does that sound right?
Yep.
Okay. Keep me honest.
Two and two on that one. On the alternate, we're two and two.
Jason and Morgan had two votes each.
I'm sorry?
Jason and Morgan had two votes each. Morgan Wiley?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, they do, I'm sorry. So let's go backwards then. We need, yeah, good point. Vote for one of the, let's go left, right together and vote for one of the two. It'll be Jason Weinstein or Wiley.
Morgan Wiley.
Morgan Wiley. Morgan Wiley, okay. Sherry?
I'm okay either way. Let's see, I'm going to go ahead and stick with Morgan Wiley.
Okay. Pete?
I'll make it easy for everybody. I'll, Morgan Wiley was impressive as well.
Okay, that'd be three. We good?
I need to vote.
We good? All right. Morgan Wiley is the alternate.
It might be unanimous. I had Morgan Wiley.
Well, there's four.
There we go.
I'm sure you would agree too, so it's unanimous. Morgan.
Thank you, Jason, yes.
And in the Planning Board, that was kind of easy, too. We have Ernie Carpico, which I think has done a good job as chairman, that's my opinion. Sean McGrath, who has appeared before us on several occasions, and Dana Ryback. Is that still all good?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Correct.
We're done.
I think you need to do this in a form of a motion.
Do the motions, yeah.
All right. Would somebody want to do the motion? And I'll read these back if you want, but if not, I think you got them.
I can do the first one here.
You good? Okay.
All right. Motion to appoint Jay Marinco and Timothy Forrest to the Board of Adjustment as in-town member and appoint Jase, Morgan Wiley, as, sorry, as in-town alternate member with terms expiring February 28th to 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. And for the Planning Board?
Motion to reappoint, in this case, Sean McGrath, Ernie Carpico, and Dana Ryback to the Planning Board as in-town members with terms expiring February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. So we will send out notices to everyone, even those that were not appointed, and making sure that they're aware to check back for other opportunities to get involved. As you know, right now, we've got a lot of different things going on, so hopefully we can get folks involved that want to be. So, thank you.
That's all I've been said, but I'll say it again. Thank you for all those who signed up and weren't voted in this time, don't stop. And for those of you who were voted in, again, in the case, thank you very much for your support and your hard work. It helps us a lot and the town. Item 9A, new business, annual board of adjustment, why did we do that? Excuse me. We will go on. 9B, new business, 18DP-11 slash 18WAV-23-350, Green Oaks Parkway. Matt's back. Matt Beard. And Rachel Jones, maybe.
All right. So your next item up is a request for a development plan and a request for a waiver associated with that development plan. We will ask you to make an administrative decision tonight, so no public hearing or anything associated with this. You will consider the findings of fact for the waiver request, make a determination on the waiver, and then consider and make a determination on the development plan. So the site is located on the north side of Green Oaks Parkway, just before the intersection of the perimeter. The site plan complies with all of our minimum requirements for the RT Research and Technology District, with the exception of the waiver that has been submitted to locate 100% of the minimum parking within the front yard, rather than the 75 that would typically be allowed. 75%, that is. The landscape plan meets all of our minimum requirements, again, with the exception of an alternate landscape letter that was submitted to relocate some of the foundation landscaping from the southeast side of the building to the adjacent perimeter yard and screening area in front of the building. This is the loading dock, so there is a required screening area in front of that, and so they've just added some landscaping to that area. And the applicant can go over those in a little bit more detail if you want. The building elevations are provided on the screen. It is just brick and stone block. It meets all of our minimum requirements. And if you have any questions on engineering-related items, we can have Rachel come up.
Any questions on engineering? No? We're good. Nice job, Rachel.
And I might ask Mark Brady to come up and go over some of the Planning Board discussion items.
Sure. Be good. Good evening, Mark.
Mayor.
How you doing?
We discussed a couple of items related to this project. One was the parking waiver and 75% to 100% upfront, and the applicant presented the total plan and everyone was comfortable with the parking waiver. The other item that we discussed was the stormwater issues or potential stormwater issues in the, in the rear. They're going to have a gravel drive in the, in the rear for storage as well as deliveries. And again, after discussion, we felt comfortable with what the applicant had come forward with and voted a 801.
801.
To pass it.
Questions, Mark? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You did a good job. Appreciate it. Any further discussion from the board? Or anything else, Matt, you got?
Unless you have further questions for me, we can have the applicant come up.
Do you want the applicant to come up?
Yes, please.
Sure.
John?
Thank you for the time. Jonathan Keener. My address, 2721 Toxy Drive in Raleigh. I'm representing the applicant in this case. Peak Fall Protection, a small company that is quickly growing, looking to locate their new headquarters here in the Business Park. Very excited to come. Have about 50 employees now, looking to the growth over the next two years to add 20 more. So we're very excited to get exactly this kind of applicant in the Business Park. In addressing the two waivers in the Planning Board, I think we've worked directly with engineering and staff. The first waiver about the parking is safety-driven. Like some other projects in the park, the back area is where we'll have circulation for trucks and deliveries, not the kind of place you'd want people walking across the parking. So we've asked for the waiver to have parking up front to facilitate that. Safety is our chief concern there. It's a fall protection company, that's what we're all about. The second is for the landscaping. The landscaping, where we've asked for the alternate, is a portion of the foundation that actually is hidden from view from the other neighbors because of the required fencing and the screening, as you said. We asked to have that landscaping area moved out front, allowed us to put a little bit more landscaping out in front of the building where it can be seen. Also, do more to have it in front of the fences. We'd all rather look at some planting and some nice landscaping rather than the fence. So that's the only waivers that we've requested. We're very excited for the time. If you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Questions for the board? For John?
No.
We're all good? All good? Thank you, John.
Thanks.
We have three motions. Who wants to tackle number one?
I'll take it. Motion to make and accept the findings of fact and approve waiver of regulations to allow 100% of the total number of off-street parking spaces between the front building line and the property line in association with development petition number 18-DP-11.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Motion to approve waiver of regulations to allow 100% of the total number of off-street parking spaces between the front building line and property line in association with development petition 18-DP-11.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three.
Motion to approve development plan 18-DP-11 for 350 Green Oaks Parkway as submitted by Thompson and Associates with conditions as listed in the agenda packets.
Second. Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Item 9C, new business, 17DP-13A01 Town Hall Commons Master Sign Plan. Beth Trous.
Good evening.
Good evening, Beth.
So, good evening. Tonight's request is, the purpose is a request for a master sign plan and waivers for the Town Hall Commons project. I'm asking you guys to make a determination on waivers 18-WAVE-25 through 18-WAVE-29, the findings of fact, and consider master plan, master sign plan for 17DP-13A01 Town Hall Commons. You guys are all familiar with the site. This master sign plan is just for the private portion of the Town Hall Commons project. And the purpose for master sign plans, you guys don't get to see a lot of them, they're really here to promote unique signage. With the use of waivers, they can allocate allowable square footage from one portion of a building to another portion. We vet it out before it comes to you guys to make sure that they don't exceed the overall allowable square footage for the entire site. So that's our half of it, and then they have five waivers that they are requesting. The first waiver request is to allow for the lower-level tenants to have both a projecting sign and a wall sign. The second waiver is to allow for an increase in the allowable, the allowable lower-level square footage needed for the tenants by applying the unused square footage from their upper levels down to the lower level. And waiver 27 is a request to allow to increase the allowable lower-level facade square footage needed for the tenant projecting sign. So in the first waiver, they want to have a wall sign and a projecting sign. The overall project signage, building projection signs, and they're going to take the square footage from their upper level on the east facade, the unused ground sign, the remaining unused portion of the upper-level rear facade, so the west facade, they're going to take all that square footage that they're not using and apply it to the lower level. Waiver 28 is to request all allowable increase for the maximum projection of the main projecting sign for the, it says Town Hall Commons, it was in the master sign plan, from four feet to four feet and 11 inches. That'll still stay out of the right-of-way, so there's no risk of projecting into that. And then for the last waiver is to request to allow an increase of maximum sign square footage area for the incidental signs from two square feet to 11.5 square feet to accommodate a tenant directory on the west facade. So typically, our incidental signs are limited in size. Mostly, you see them on the ground. This one will be on the back of the building. It's discreet and it, in order to accommodate all their tenants, instead of having a larger tenant sign, they're going to have it on the back of the building. Our planning board voted to recommend approval, 711, and Mark Brady is here if you have any questions.
Will Mark come back up?
Yeah, please.
Yes, please.
Okay. The discussion we had on the, on the signs was generally, generally a short discussion, but there was one dissenting vote. And it was centered around not having enough detailed drawings of how this building would look with the signs and that a concern on the part of one of the board members that as this is completed, it would not look good, to quote, to quote him. And that more detailed information would be necessary, that it might look cluttered, the signs may be too large, and the lettering might be too large. And that was, that was pretty much the center of the dissenting vote.
And the vote was 711, correct? 711?
711.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions, Mark? Comments?
Did the Planning Board discuss at all? I see a lot of these have a lot of light behind them, like the impact of these lit signs in the Village District downtown. That's a lot of light. Did you guys talk about that at all?
We, we saw examples, pictures, I think Beth showed us some examples of that, the type of lighting, and felt it was, I think we felt it was subtle and, and the impact of the light or too much light was not something we, we were concerned with in our discussions.
Other questions, Mark? Good?
Yep.
Good? Good? Thank you again, Mark. You get double pay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And Beth, any other comments?
If there's any questions for me.
Any further questions of Beth?
The same question. Did you guys talk about the impact of these lit signs and the light pollution, I guess, if it's too bright?
Sure. The applicant is here to answer any of those questions, but they are recommending a halo-lit sign, which most of the signs you see currently around town have internally illuminated lights. These will light from behind and kind of wash over the building more so. So you'll have a back source light and then the letter in front of it. The master sign plan was attached in your packet, and I think there's a good example of what that looks like. I'm trying to think, I don't think we have any signs here in town yet that are halo-lit, but it is a current trend. It's a softer impact on an overall feel.
I couldn't tell on paper.
Yeah, it is kind of hard to tell.
Okay.
I have been to conferences, though, and I have seen, it is a softer look than the standard internally illuminated light.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Beth? You good?
Do you want to hear from the applicant, or should we just go?
You want to hear from the applicant, it's a question.
Move on to the motion?
Yes?
Sure.
Yes? Please, yeah. You told me twice, right? We held up, too.
Sorry. Again, I appreciate the time. And certainly, the light pollution is one of the reasons why we look at halo-lit signs in particular. There's a nice colored picture in the quick presentation on run-through. Really, this is just going through some of the waivers and just kind of our thought process behind them. I know we've been asked to be brief, so if there's not a particular question or if there is a particular question, just let me know. I'll spend some time on it. Really, what drove this was the community character goals of the Village District Plan and Comprehensive Plan, really trying to create that village atmosphere, and in particular, pedestrian and pedestrian-oriented places. That's why we've asked for the majority of the waivers to bring signage that's more vehicular-oriented down to the lower level so we can really address and create a pedestrian-friendly environment in downtown. It really starts with a lot of the signage. It also helps the tenants directly to relate to pedestrians to hopefully create the effective and vibrant atmosphere we're looking for in the Village District. So that was our thought behind it. Purpose of the plan, this sort of shows, this is the pedestrian environment we're trying to create, we have a very unique project in that we have all four sides addressed to the public, in that we have the deck behind, and we wanna bring people, um, in the safest possible way to enjoy everything that hopefully we're bringing to Town Hall Commons. Um, the big signs that we have located, the Town Hall Commons sign is right here, trying to create that focal point, again, something that's spoken of in the Comprehensive Plan, and then we also have a direction to the parking to help vehicles safely circle around the building to where they need to be, to get out and enjoy the pedestrian environment, hopefully shortly thereafter. Um, other things, the elevator sign, again, uh, making sure that pedestrians know the safest possible route, as well as directory signs to get them to where they need to be. Um, the first waiver, this will address the question, hopefully, this colored picture is a very good example of the typical signage that we would expect to see from some of the tenants, as you can see, the backlighting is really made to wash just the area behind it, it stands out very nicely specifically for that tenant, but doesn't wash the building or create too much light pollution going up, certainly is an issue going forward. On the right, you'll see some examples of some of the projecting signs, these are signs you'll see in places that we've all been to, probably North Hills, Cameron Village in particular, very effective for creating the pedestrian environment, and this is the type of sign that we're asking for the tenants to be able to use. Uh, waiver two starts to talk about the areas of the building, the area, building in red, this shows the allowable area from the upper levels being moved to create the signage on the lower levels there. And again, as Beth alluded to, um, we are very particular to make sure that we are well below the overall allocation for total, uh, square footage of signage, we're just trying to put it in the best place to impact the pedestrians and create the environment that we're looking for. You'll see that on the west facade, and on the east facade for waiver three. Uh, waiver four talks about the projection for the main marquee sign, again, we're trying to get that off the ground, rather than have a, um, monument sign that you may have seen in other places, we want it as uninterrupted a pedestrian environment as we can, so we've moved that marquee sign up onto the building, we're asking for a slight increase in the projection, but again, that's well, um, back from the right-of-way, but trying to create an impactful sign that could be a landmark for vehicles, as well as pedestrians circling around, and as you can see, that's right above the, where the fountain and sort of the open plaza up top, that'll be the focal point for hopefully some community gatherings outside of Town Hall Commons. Last waiver is talking about a directory sign that's facing the parking area, so this is back on the west facade, you can see the breezeway on the right, essentially, what we'd like to do with this sign is direct pedestrians to the safest possible, no-vehicle route of going through the breezeway right in the middle of the site, so that they can get to, um, the front facades along Main Street as easily and safely as possible, and this sign allows us to do that, as well as introduce them to some of the tenants they may see if they go through the breezeway. So really, just going back to, uh, directions, creating the pedestrian environment that I think the Comprehensive Plan is looking for. That's all I have. Any questions I may answer?
Further questions?
I appreciate the time.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks, John, uh, in terms of the construction, and, uh, you still slated for roughly April?
Yes, that's, that is our goal right now, um, we are, we have already started, uh, tenant up at work on our first tenant, going inside, um, we'll hopefully be closing in the building over the next month, and you'll see, uh, a lot of the glass going in here, so I have a very nice facade out front.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is it? Anything else for Beth? If not, motions, Beth? There you go, three.
Motion to approve Adopt Resolution Number 19 dash 04 to make and accept the findings of fact for waivers to the sign regulations as submitted by Trustwell Properties Group and listed in the packet.
Second. Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made findings of fact of waivers of UDO regulations, motions to approve the waivers as listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three of three.
Motion to approve Development Plan Amendment Number 17 dash DP dash 13 dash 801 for Town Hall Commons Master Sign Plan as submitted by Trustwell Properties Group.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you, and thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Did a good job. Uh, number 10 is other business, I'll start off briefly by saying, again, crosswalk safety, we never give up. Uh, Kendra, I didn't mention this to you, but can you give us an update on the stoplight? Have we got anything new?
I'm assuming...
Everybody's, oh, stoplight on, on Lassiter, across from the new part of the shopping center?
Yes, they, um, the signal is being modified with the left end to the shopping center.
Right.
And DOT has approved that, and today's latest update is that they're making these adjustments, and signals should be there next week.
Good, thank you. In that shopping center, I think you all seen it, uh, the Butcher Market is now open, and those of us who have been there, we spent a lot of money, but it's good stuff, and, uh, the Eggs, breakfast, restaurant, egg, yeah, down at the corner, is just about ready to open, as is Triangle Wine, so we're getting, that's all I got. Who else?
Uh, just real, quickly, speaking on crosswalks, uh, there was, uh, some chatter on Facebook last week that the Avant Ferry Castle Road, the pedestrian, uh, crosswalk that made the news last summer, with people dashing across, they did get the, uh, the signal, so there is now a 10-second lead time before the right, the green right turn, so people were very happy about that.
Good.
They have to walk less fast now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Uh, question to Kendra, in terms of the light at Village Walk, we still scheduled for February?
Um, the contractor's supposed to be starting on that, and the date for completion was actually the end of February, beginning of March for that.
Okay.
Um, we're meeting with the business owners and getting postcards to them, we've also delivered postcards to the elementary, middle, and high school, our, uh, school resource officers are helping hand those out to get the word out to the parents, as well as the students that leave during lunch, to travel to, um, South Park for lunch, and, um, trying to think what else, I think that's it, and we've been trying to keep that update on social media as well.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's, and now we have sheets to add to the craziness in the, the crosswalks, and I know you all took a look, uh, are we gonna take a look out there for the crosswalks to make sure it's safe for these...
Right.
...kids who are at the end of school, walking down there and crossing.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I have a couple of things, I'm excited that we have our first Tree Board meeting next Thursday, and looking forward to starting on that process and, um, getting involvement from the community. And then I also wanted to point out, I know that the town has posted on the calendar, there is a Unity Weekend coming up this weekend with a couple of events, most specifically on Sunday, there is a march from Food Lion to Cultural Center, so there'll be one lane where we'll be walking, so, um, just be careful from 3 to 4 o'clock, if you're driving downtown, or better yet, join, join the group and participate in that event.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great, it's a great walk, and it's, it's, doesn't take too long, and it just, it's a great feeling.
There's a program Saturday morning where it's a free community breakfast, and we're hoping we ran out of food, that, that's like, we hope, yeah, we hope that maybe people complain we didn't have enough, that would be the best, so, um, but it's all on the town website.
In case those who didn't live here then, this walk started, and I kinda remember being the first one, I think it was 19 years ago.
Well, this is the...
Maybe 20.
The fifth, and, of this, this community, this group, this is the fifth annual one.
This group, yeah.
But before that group, we had, we started to walk.
Yep, we walked out, yep, I remember walking, we didn't, we, we didn't have the breakfast in, in, in the...
We did not.
Program afterwards, which was just, last year was so moving, it was so good.
Yeah. Who else? All good?
Yep.
All good? Managers report.
Great, thank you, Mayor, I have one item for you tonight, and that is, um, some of you last year, last May, may have attended the North Carolina League of Municipalities' Dinner, Town-City Dinner with state-elected officials, and the second annual event is gonna be this upcoming February, the 20th, and I think some of you may have seen some of those notices come across perhaps in your email, what I'd like, it's gonna be at the, um, Raleigh Convention Center, the reception and dinner is at 5:00 PM, but they are having some informational, educational sessions starting at 2:30 that day, um, so I would encourage you, if you wanna take a look at those, and, and we can certainly get you registered for that. The, um, if you would, uh, you can send back to Linda McKenney, if you could, by this Friday, let us know if you have an interest in attending on that date, we'll be happy to register all of us as one group, and we can make that happen, so, I just wanna make you aware of that, and for Representative Batch, who's here, I will look forward to, I know, uh, seeing her and, and the others, an opportunity to break bread and, uh, network and talk a little about the issues facing local governments. That's it.
Awesome. Counselor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, um, there are two issues, um, uh, for a executive closed session, uh, one, dealing with an economic development incentive grant, and staff would like to get[1729.41]